Okay, so I'm writing them down, okay. Superintendent, my second was, uh, she's great. Sherry, when we reconvene at seven oh eight, Anne Graves, okay?
Who?
And I.
Peter's great, okay.
Peter's great. She ignores me all the time.
Seven oh eight.
I try to give equity there.
No, I think it's wrong.
I have a press.
We're going to put allegiance again. Roll call, Sherry.
Ms. Berry?
Here.
Ms. Graves?
Here.
Mr. Hamilton?
Here.
Ms. Mitchell?
Here.
Mr. Peters?
Here.
Mr. Ferber and Marcus Abson and Mr. Webanero, well, Marcus Abson.
And Sherry, is this now a?
Yes, let's go.
Okay, we're going to have approval of the agenda with a change on, um, thirteen G. Uh, has to have a date spanned twenty-three, twenty-four. And five thousand for twenty-two, twenty-three, and TBD for twenty-three, twenty-four. And then thirteen F is replace Jennifer La Bombard with Casey Snow, Special Ed Coordinator. I have a motion to approve the agenda with those changes. Motion, Mrs. Mitchell?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hamilton, all in favor?
Aye.
Carry. Approval of the minutes of our reorganization, our regular meeting and our special meetings. Motion? Motion, Mrs. Graves?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Mitchell, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Um, I don't think there was anybody over there and there was nobody on further comments. We're good from that one. Superintendent's report?
So I see the code of conduct is there, and we have an update to the code of conduct. I'm announcing a video talk about that, so let me just talk about it for a minute.
Yes, I did realize.
So.
That's why it's coming.
Um, so typically we'd be done with the code of conduct by now and maybe publishing the code of conduct for by now. Um, but what ended up happening was middle school is really struggling at this point with, um, students and cell phones.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and so in the current policy, in the current code of conduct, it speaks of students putting their, um, basically, when I was there, we were talking about if you were going to have a cellphone in school or allowed to have a cellphone in school, we were going to ask that students gave us their cellphone number. It was maybe a little convoluted in my, in what I was thinking, my philosophy was that I could call you if you were being a goofball or whatever. I don't know, it was probably going to be more work in the long run, but it was my theory and then I moved. So, um, definitely the middle school is struggling a great deal with, with cell phones. So what they, what they're asking right now is to not allow students to have their cellphone in the classroom. It would be something they would, they can keep in their locker, I believe is what, is what it ended up being. So that's one of the pieces that's out right now for review. And I guess it's one of those topics I'd like to just, if there's something you'd like to share about that or your concerns about that. I just feel it's where at that place as a school where it is, it is much more a distraction in classrooms than, than it really should be.
As long as, I think we need to be upfront with parents because that's a big change.
Oh, we will.
Because the parents are very much, even if they're in class, as you know, they expect an answer sometimes in the family manager.
Well, and I think it's the, one of the most difficult.
I, I didn't say.
Maybe we need to have a policy on the student.
But if they know, look, they will have designated four minutes or three minutes, whatever is between the time to them.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
I think that that, as long as we.
I will, I will, um.
I don't think we should, I think we should be very much for with the.
I'll take the language, um, just because typically you expect a presentation. I'll, I'll take.
It was late.
I'll, I'll, you can see that on that.
Yeah, it was.
I'll take that language out and put it in, um, my application.
Does that apply for lunch and interim?
I'm happy with that.
They've always used it, oh, to, um.
I, I'm sorry.
They used it during lunch and interim. I know they did, yeah.
That should be, oh.
I think that, I'm not sure.
Again, I just, because I don't have full view of information.
I'm not a, not a fan of, I'm not, I'm not a fan of squeezing a grip too tight on a teenager. We provide them at least some avenue that can be managed. And I'm completely in support of it.
And preferably they could put their phone on the vibration or silent when it's in the hall or as you're going to hear, ring, ring, ding.
That's an excellent point. It should be a silence in the locker. Right?
Because I think I could assume that would be distracting if you have a classroom.
Yeah.
Somebody like repeats.
Testing week?
Are they, they're getting their TikTok updates or Instagram or whatever.
Yeah, let me just, let me find it here, just waiting.
You laugh at me, I literally, oh, I got a snap, I got a snap, I got a snap, oh, I got so-and-so posted TikTok video, I don't know. Really?
There.
You look at their phone, there's like fifty-two notifications, it's been three minutes since they last looked at. I get it, right? I mean, my phone sometimes does that, I was, I talked to our, I had like sixteen messages.
Um, so the, the proposed change is to elect electronic devices and policy for grade six through eight to create an educational environment at the middle school level. Um, appropriate focus on learning as we, as all students and families to please keep personal electronic devices at home. Students' cell phones, students are permitted to bring such items to school, however, they must be in their locker in, in a silent mode. Um, between school hours of arrival and dismissal, personal owned computer devices such as laptops, textbooks, tablets, e-readers can be used for instructional purposes, um, at the discretion of the classroom teacher. For Central School District is not responsible for any devices, um, device or data loss, theft or damage. And then they have offenses, do we talk about offense number one, students will be required to meet with the leadership to discuss the violation and how it conflicts with the district's code of conduct. Um, and then offense two, the students will be required to meet with the leadership to discuss the violation and how it conflicts with the district's code of conduct. Public meeting, the student will be required to lead their device in, in a designated secure location in the middle school. And then offense three, um, same consequences as the second, and request of the parent, the parent meeting. So they are talking about having it not in school during the day.
Yeah.
I can see that being a violation, not having it in school.
I can, no.
Because if you're going to.
If you're going to your sports afterwards, I'm.
But then it's.
That's what I'm saying, I'm not sure.
How enforceable is it, that's the part, if you have a rule, it has to be enforceable.
I think it's in the locker, it's in the locker, I just think if.
They can.
Students are permitted to bring such items to school, however, they must be in their locker in a silent mode between the hours of arrival and dismissal.
And previously, they were allowed, we used them during interims and they were, and we used them during lunch, so that's a question we got.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind hearing from, uh, our administrators about that piece.
And if they're permitted to use them between classes?
Pretty sure, well, I know that what, I, I, I'll double check on both of those questions. I think what it's going to come down to is I think that there was, the cafeteria became a, um, so what was ended up happening in the middle school cafeteria was, um, dropping something, um, sending it out to everybody in the room. So if you were able, and they were, they were sending pornography to each other, couldn't figure out who it was, and it was going across, it was upsetting people. Um, it was also texting each other, so it was, it was more than just, it's not, it's, it's not like, oh, I'm wrong, I'm not learning, I left that practice tonight. It, it's the disruptive type of behavior. And the hard part about it was, is you aren't always able to determine who dropped it. And I know that those were concerns.
Yeah.
Um, in the cafeteria.
Or maybe interim was the piece. I know.
Yeah, under, under supervision of a teacher.
Yeah, yeah, because I know that my grandkids would often, at interim, would send me a message, can you pick me up at this time?
Yeah, it's, I mean, same thing.
Or this has been changed.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And unfortunately or fortunately, I think we rely on law on that, parents never do.
Yeah.
I agree.
Agree.
And just a reminder, we're not sure what the, the real change is going to be in an agreement on it. We may have to, we may not be able to adopt it till thirty days after the board, a form of the board.
Right.
As to what the full change is going to be.
Which we could do in, in office, right?
You could do the change on the thirty.
Yeah.
We couldn't adopt it at the September meeting, we have to adopt it at the October.
Can we adopt it?
Can we?
We also got a policy, um, we need to check a couple of things too against it, but can, can we?
For the court on.
Um, can we adopt, um, other than the one piece about the, uh, cell phones, the queue? For electronic devices in sixth through eighth?
Yeah, generally you're supposed to, the, this public hearing would be what you want to put forward as the change to the public though. And the pub is usually supposed to go up on the website and public has thirty days to comment on.
So would it be best, would the board be more comfortable with saying that they would like that? I mean, I can, I mean, I get that this seems more restricted, much more restrictive than we were. So a step away from the most restricted would be to have, uh, let the student use it in an interim, in a classroom during interim. Um, and they wouldn't be taking it to the cafeteria with them, they'd put it back in their locker when they went to the cafeteria. Because we are talking sixth, seventh and eighth graders, they all have an interim.
They all do, yep.
And, and so it's not, you know, that would be, and if that's the case, I could make that change and then we could, and if you agree to that one change to it, then we could put that forward.
Yes. As administration.
Do you want to read that one more time?
I can.
If you, if you just want to, you know, sometimes listening to someone's honest opinion. I'm going to share my computer with anybody who wants to see it.
Oh, I have it too.
I'm ready, but I think I've, I think I've addressed our. Is there a way we can address it to, like, parents who are, like, to the middle school parents that there is a change? So if they don't come, because obviously there's not a lot of people here. And then there, we're making a, a change to the code of conduct policy that was not there last year or the year before. So if you have an eighth grader who may have been attached to their phone during school hours, I'm not saying right, wrong or different. That is a major change to maybe the way that you arrange transportation, you raise, or it's your expectations of hearing from said student.
Yeah, I would too.
I just think if, I, it's not something that we're trying to hide, so I think that we should be. They have the right to do the public comment, so Mr. Storms or Mr. Manchester has sent something out saying. Yeah, I just think. The rules change now is up on the website or. But most of the other changes that we've made to the code of conduct recently have not been big ones. They've been language changes or, you know, vaping is now included with the smoking policy. And I think that this is.
What was the policy before, they could use it all day whenever they wanted?
Just wasn't.
So, um.
Like not disruptive.
The last one that I was involved with was if they, if they were going to have their phone in school, they had to register their phone in the district. So basically, in school, I would have put in. But, but they could just have. They, and, and a teacher could tell you, a teacher could determine whether you could, you, teachers would have boxes, for example, or bins in the classroom, which are required to put it. We definitely did, they were experiencing a great deal of, of pushback from kids. So probably when, when you were here, you know, my rule and my rule is you're going to put it in a basket. Um, and teacher, if I don't see it, then maybe I'm okay with that, but, you know, those types of things. We were getting a lot of problems in the middle school, where kids are absolutely refusing to give their, to put their phone in the box. Um, that on the same token was going off, they're texting their parents, they're talking to their parents in another class, you know, or, or their friends. I'm, I'm old enough, I'm old enough to not want cell phones in school. I'm fine with that change, using it in the interim. I was also fine with the proposed code of conduct.
I sound this way like when you're sitting there folded, huh?
Are you all comfortable at this point with interim? And I'm, I'm moving forward and I'll make the change that will add that the students can use it during their interim and, but not during, in the cafeteria.
Uh, what about after school?
It just, just says during the schedule.
During school, during scheduled school hours, so you have, then you leave.
So between, so.
Between, um, seven, over in the middle school will be seven, twenty to, um, to forty-five.
To include tenth period?
Or to ten, yeah, to ten.
Two, two ten.
Okay, so not including tenth period.
Well, I guess I'll say this to you, I think that that's, that's going to be a more nebulous, that would be one of the.
Arrival and dismissal, I suppose.
So the, the, arrival and dismissal, so the hard part about it is, is you're going to have a kid who's supposed to be staying in the period and making knucklehead on his phone, you know what I mean? So I, I guess that would be gray area that I would push a little bit. So I, I understand that we, we can, we can make it specific times, if that makes it more clear.
Or could you say, to, to leave that, should you go to the dismissal time? That way if they're supposed to be in tenth period?
Yeah, I mean. I'll clarify that much.
I.
In tenth, or after school would be like, at a teacher's discretion. So if you're in band or, or, let's say that's okay, but in math class where you owe fifteen assignments or something that you need to get done and it's distraction, then it should be here between.
What I'll do is I'll, I'll come up with timeframes that, that if we're talking about, I think that there is room for it to be in depth period, um, because that is a time when I'm getting ready to go to sports or I'm getting ready to be picked up, and it makes a lot of sense.
Right.
Um, but I think it becomes really a, a messy situation, but I'd say that certain places it can happen. Um, because I will say you will also become a, it'll be, um, a, a big toll for teachers.
Right.
Teachers are going to have to be consistent, and as soon as you open up a, open the window for it not to be consistent, it might be consistent.
Well, so periods one through nine, it's not going to be, it's not an issue. It's, this is a, unless you're in interim and it's not a distraction, obviously, if you misuse the privilege that anybody would at any grade level, then it's not going to be awesome.
Right. Yeah. I, I will meet the gym and I'll make it, I'll make sure you have an update of it, but I, that, that would be the change. And then go forward to elsewhere.
Okay.
Okay, to, to parents letting them know.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Um, and we are getting ready to do our new teacher, our new staff orientation. It's going to be on, um, the AT, collaboration with the AT and the, um, PAC. So, um, we're going to be doing everything from getting it ready with your technology to, um, meeting with, uh, mentors. So mentors of each one of our new staff members will be coming in for lunch. One of the PATs sponsoring the lunch, so that's nice of them. Um, and then, um, they're actually going to be, um, representatives of the AT as well. And then they're going to participate, uh, I have a teacher coming in during one of our breaks to talk about being a first year teacher. She's a second year teacher. And then we also will be doing circle in the afternoon with them, um, so they have, are, are going to participate in that. Mr. Berry's going to run the circle with that group. So it's pretty jammed that day, the eighteenth, and then all teachers, all mentors and mentees will have two hours of, um, additional time, okay, time afterwards, working with their mentor, mentee. So they can kind of decide on the two hours that they spend together, kind of just the two of them.
Okay.
Before the beginning of the school year.
What you should, the number, district wise, new teachers about, you know.
Teacher, teachers we have, I think it was, um, twelve people, and I think is what I counted, I, I sent it forward. But we also have, um, we're still hiring building substitutes, we're still hiring. Um, most building subs are hired at this point, we're just converting A's and TAs and, though that's still kind of, um, we had some movement that just happened. People are new jobs, so that's happening.
Good.
All right.
Bye.
And the school's looking good in regards to being ready for, and we're always a little, we're always a little fearful this time of year that we're going to really get there, walking around with Matt today, and we discussed some of those things. One of the biggest challenges, I think, that's out there is, um, when COVID was very prevalent and we were closing school or bringing students back to school, we had to purchase new desks and handbags and furniture purchases. Teachers have been told at this point, you need to make your recommend, your decision of what it is you want in your room. If you want Travis Way tables or you want desks, because once we start putting them away, Conex boxes don't come to us in September because we're not, we're not getting the Conex box. But anyway, um, we're taking legs off, all cafeterias will be back to normal, um, cafeteria look. So they, kids won't be sitting in individual tables next year, they'll be sitting in room tables. Um, and the school's looking pretty good, you know, I, I did talk to about the other situation, but, um, you know, downstairs, a little flooding situation we had. But other than that, things are going pretty well. We probably will be moving some staff members, some studio staff members over to the other side of campus to help out. Because always, this side always gets done a little bit quicker than that side because there's just that much more stuff to move over there. So besides that, I think we're ready to go. The administrators are going to be going on twenty-third, um, to gearing up training, um, with the F O C S, I see, yes. And, um, that'll also be part of their value, their teacher evaluation training will be that as well. Um, and any, anybody who's not able to, and we also have, um, freshman orientation, that, Mr. Berry's going to actually stay back and then he will actually go in his training, um, with Rachel, when Rachel goes in to see me, he has to, it hurts. So that's where we are without Matt.
We'll still have to have those boxes around.
They'll have some, not as many.
We're going to start buying our own. Conex boxes?
Yeah.
We're going to put them together.
Yeah.
And make some rooms out of them.
As I say, are we going past with the mods?
Isn't that, isn't that like a?
Remember the mods?
This is the new version of the mods.
The upgraded mods.
He's not, he, he.
Hey, I, I attended classes with the mods.
So.
Okay.
All right, that's, that's all I got.
Thank you. Yay.
Mr. Moreno?
Um, well, I wasn't going to say much today, but I do want to kind of elaborate from the, from the, to your teacher's point of view on the code of conduct of the phones, um, especially the tenth period piece. Um, if you leave it very open that students can use them during tenth period, that's going to create an issue with students who are there for, um, extra help. It becomes disruptive to other students who are there.
Yeah.
Um, so when you, when you look at that language, please think about that, about not leaving it open that kids, that students can use it during tenth period at their own, at their whim. Um, the other issue we run into is, you know, and this might need to be put out to parents is, you know, when I went, when I went to school, I'm sure when all, if you went to school, if there was an emergency at home, called the office and things, they usually got to the student pretty quick. Now they're calling into the classrooms with, with the phones. I mean, that happens at the high school, kids are walking through the halls in the high school. We, I know in the high school, we haven't looked to go to the, to the extreme that the middle school is. Um, and we're hoping, if the middle school starts it, it'll hold, it'll carry up to the high school when they get there. Uh, but the phones are becoming a very distracted piece in the classroom. When you have kids walking through the hall on their phone and a teacher addresses them and they put their finger up to tell the teacher to hold on.
I'm talking to my mother.
Exactly, and that's what you get, I'm talking to your mother, so.
Yeah.
You know, it's very hard to yell at a student who's on the phone with their mother or father. Um, so I, I just think if, you know, I think the middle school's on the right track with this, um, in trying to curb it, but, um,
we got.
And we've already talked, um, around P A T that we've got to emphasize to our members that we have to be consistent.
Right.
Because if three teachers enforce it and two don't, well, it's definitely.
It's gone.
Right.
And maybe that's something on Parents Square right away that, um, the message can go out.
Should be called out.
A district message can go out to parents, please.
I mean, if you can send.
Don't call your parent, your kids are.
Teach them, have them like answer a question, send a text, I would think that that would be less disruptive.
Right.
Yeah.
If they, like, if they're between classes, they can return a text message.
If, if between classes in the high school, but.
Yeah.
You know.
Because I, I've seen kids text, and they can text an entire, like, dissertation with, in like ten seconds.
Without looking at the keyboard.
Right.
They're just dragging their fingers.
But I just, you know, I was listening to, especially the conversation about tenth period, if you've got students that are supposed to be there for extra help and, you know, have the.
Yeah.
There's going to be a.
Yeah. Yeah.
Good.
But what's the difference then between students are there for extra help and students are just waiting for their sport or extracurriculars to start?
Well, we, we have, and we had, and I, I don't know, so we had an athletic study hall where if students were waiting for the sport, they went to the athletic study hall.
Okay.
And, you know, that was kind of more, my understanding was a little bit more relaxed, a little bit more free. You know, kids are just kind of in a holding place, so they're not roaming the halls. When students are in with a teacher for extra help, you might have other students in there taking a test.
Mm-hmm.
You might have other students in there who are trying to review for a test. Or students are in there because, oh, they have to do homework in three or four days and.
Yeah.
So, so that's.
Including tenth period or including tenth period, that with the exception of academics, or academic study hall?
It wasn't academic, it was an athletics.
Or excuse me, I, I'm sorry, I used the wrong word, not athletic study hall.
But I would. But again, I, I'm just putting that out there to kind of look into and maybe talk to Coach B or Miss, you know, Miss Bertholmio a little bit about that because I do know athletic study hall got a little outrageous. Had issues last year as well, so.
Okay.
I'm just putting that out there from, from a teacher's, from a teacher's point of view, you know, just.
It's a better way to differentiate.
I guess, yeah, my impression was, was really, I was thinking about building a study hall when kids are just waiting for something else to happen. I don't have an issue with it if it's not a distraction, everybody else, but you're right.
Well, they're not allowed to just hang out in the halls back, back in the day, that's what we did when we were at the school.
Right, and the administration, the administrators have done a great job, I think, Mr. Berry, Mr. Manchester, Coach B, they're in the halls. They're moving kids to, so that they're not just hanging out in the halls, that they're somewhere, either with a teacher or in the athletic study hall. They've done a really good job of clearing the halls, especially, especially the last few years. Um, so that we don't have those kids that are just kind of hanging out in the corner or in the back corner unsupervised and nobody knows what they're doing.
Yeah.
So.
Good.
Um, so I just, that's just, you know, from a teacher's point of view on the.
Appreciate that.
Oh, that's good, that's a good, smart point, good point.
As, as far as getting ready for the school year, uh, today was my first day in after we're bound to end it. And I believe we're starting to see some more teachers come back onto campus a little bit. We're doing curriculum work. Um, I'm hoping teachers have had a chance to recharge and rest. Um, it's a, it's kind of an off year that we're twenty days away from our first, uh, our super, first superintendent's day, so it's a little early this year. But, uh, I think a lot of people are looking forward to hopefully being closer to the new normal or what, or normal pre-COVID.
Pre-March twenty twenty.
Right, you know, um, and I think people are looking forward to, to coming back and working with students.
Good.
Thank you.
This year.
Okay, motion to, uh, accept consent agenda items, let me see. A through F, eleven, A through F, any discussion, any questions on it? Okay, we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion, Mrs. Mitchell?
Second.
Mr. Peters, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Consent agenda twelve, A through M, any discussion or questions? Okay, I did ask a question on D, um, there's a, these are services that are offered to, uh, students when they need, down in the big engine area, so. A through M, and do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Peters, second, whoops, second, Mrs. Graves, all in favor?
Aye.
And thirteen, A through I, and we had those couple of changes in Captain G. Any other questions? Kind of a motion?
Motion.
Motion, Mrs. Mitchell, second, Mr. Peters, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
And fourteen, um, actions to, uh, to, we had talked about the three, possibly moving to three-year terms. We found out in our local area, most of them are moving to three-year terms. I went on the president's forum, a lot of districts are moving back to three, you know, to the three-year terms. Sherry did a question with, um, NISBA, and the majority is three-year terms. Um, any discussion on that? Looks like three-year terms are what people are looking at. And a couple of comments from other presidents said that they didn't find any disruption at all in three years versus five years for consistency and so on.
That's good. Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that, I think it'll get more diversity.
I think so.
Might get more interest.
Yeah.
Okay, so what I'm, we have to do, uh, we have an action. So we've, we are going to have a, a motion that.
We work for the school attorney to, um, she would have to give the resolution that the voters could vote on.
Go forward, move forward. I'm up for the term. In wait.
Proposition of the, or three-year term with everybody's agreement.
Sounds good.
Okay, Mr. Peters?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Mrs. Mitchell, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Committee membership. We don't have everybody here tonight, but, um.
Well, that means.
That's right.
So they're going, so they're going to get. We're still working on C S E A negotiations, correct?
Correct.
I am.
P A T, so stay on P A T. Okay, D A.
Right.
P A, P A T is done, P A C is done, but we'll, you know.
We're. Long time. We'll be back around, I guess.
Uh, construction committee? Keep as is?
Yes, it is. Uh, I mean, I don't know that we've had any.
We haven't had any issues, but now we've got the architect going around and doing that.
Oh, we need to put somebody on P A T, right?
Yes.
Let's say, do we want to replace automatically Ms. Morgan with Mr. Webanero and then just double checking him that he's okay with all of them?
Yeah, we're.
Where is that?
Oh, okay. Yeah, so we're, we're limited, is it only be Eddie and Norvarg?
Communication. Communication.
Yeah, cause we're, we're limited. Cause it'd only be him and Normar.
Oh, that's good, yes, yes, okay.
Yeah, he's.
It'd be only Eddie and Normar or Steve would be.
Yeah. Okay, we'll put Eddie on, okay, we'll tell him.
I'll put him on PAT and communications and then tech vision.
Yeah. Yes. Um, I really think he, um.
Tech and communications is more down his.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is really in communication. They, um.
I wouldn't mind coming off P A C and switch, but if he wants to jump in there, he'll have a negotiating.
He's on.
Well, we don't, we won't have any, we won't have any for a while, right?
Right.
Yeah, but he's on, he's already on PAT now.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I see, you're right. He'd be on PAT.
He's on PAT, yeah.
Um, the one thing I thought that he might.
Communication, Eddie would be good, would be.
Yeah.
He could take Linda's place.
Yeah, that's what we're thinking.
Yeah.
And safety, yeah.
Again, if you're not here, you're volunteers.
Safety, yeah. The other thing too is, uh, Eddie is about smart goals and so on, so, um, the strategic plan. I know Sarah and I have been at the meetings. I think Sarah Graves, you, you missed one, um, the last one, but I, um, we don't wanna have four on the committee.
No.
He's on three committees already, so I don't.
Okay, we'll just leave him, okay? And then, uh.
We can put him as an alternate if he's interested.
Yes, put an alternate on strategic plan.
Okay.
Um. The other thing too is his kilos are in elementary pre-K, I believe.
Right.
So nobody wants to change up top though, right?
No.
No.
We'll just replace him, okay?
Yeah.
I'll take, I'll take Linda's spot in the high school since I'm going that direction anyway with my kids.
And we're, we don't even.
He can grab mine.
Do we need three on each or do we, do we get the two on each?
It doesn't make any.
I don't know if.
Oh, yeah, if it's just two, then I don't.
Cause that's the only one that had three.
Yeah, cause yours are in the middle school, right?
In high school.
In high school, okay.
Yeah, it happens fast, you know.
Yours is gone, right?
Yeah.
Do you wanna be?
The one where you're first. X G, um, high school, Sarah.
I have that one, yeah.
So you wanna put Eddie in.
Just torture me once, you're gonna attend most of the things.
Yeah.
I'd be there anyway.
Okay.
So we're gonna go two across the board.
Right, and Eddie, uh, in place of Linda, in the elementary. Okay.
Wait, how old are these kids?
Little.
They're, oh, they're, okay.
And one's pre, I think one's preschool and one's in.
Maybe K and one now.
Yeah, okay.
K and two maybe.
What are your, what are yours, Mark? K and?
Uh, three and five.
Three and five, okay, so you're there.
Well, can I come off elementary?
Yes.
Cause I wouldn't be attending anything.
Okay.
Okay, do we want a second person then?
Uh, I'll, I'll move up.
You're staying on middle two?
Middle and elementary. I have one in fifth and I have, and three in middle. Was it?
Last year.
So we're gonna do, um, Webb and Hamilton for pre-K to two.
Yeah.
And Barry and Hamilton for three, five.
Yep.
Barry and Peters for six, eight.
Yeah.
And Mitchell Graves for nine, twelve. Just put it square.
Yeah.
It's a match.
And put Steve as a, an alternate in high school.
Yeah.
Particularly his phone, he's not taking it yet. Is your mom texting you?
No.
Checking on the meds?
Leave scattered.
They're going.
Yeah, leave scattered as an alternative.
I think.
I think we should make Scott on like every day because he's nine. On the middle.
Yeah. Oh, middle and high though, if it was off the.
No, Steve is gonna be the alternate on high.
The only one on high?
Yeah. Okay, did we do it?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. We have to, uh, have a motion to approve our members.
I don't know necessarily.
Motion to approve our members.
Motion.
Motion, Mrs. Mitchell, second.
Second.
Mrs. Graves, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, a motion to approve the agreement with V H S N. Are there any questions? Okay, motion.
Motion.
Mr. Hamilton, second. Mrs. Mitchell, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, a motion to change the regular monthly board meeting from the second Tuesday, the eleventh to the third, because that's that long weekend and Linda Sherry is not going to be here and it's always good to have her around. Can we do October eighteenth, motion moved to October eighteenth?
Discussion?
No, discussion first, I'm sorry, always.
Uh, you had mentioned we might have to vote on a.
We should be good now.
We should be good now.
And we're gonna go with that change and we will vote at the September meeting on the code of conduct.
Okay. Okay, I guess, cause if there were a need, then I could move it earlier.
Well, and we could come in for a five minute meeting or, or video conference and I have.
Right.
I agree. I think that if, I, I think that the making the change to the board recommended is a good thing. And I think that that way we, I just feel it's really smart for us to give somebody out to parents and to parents square. They else are voting, uh, pushing it out another month and we're basically saying school started.
Yeah, we don't wanna start with that.
I think we're better off on the thirty and approve.
Well, and the old one will stay in effect.
Sure.
That's right.
And anyway, so.
Yes, yes, that's right.
We adopted September, so.
I think that also causes confusion.
Yep. Yep.
So do we have to give them thirty days until today?